Bell still work?
Huh?
Does the bell still work?
Yeah. Everyone's here, I think that's here. Yeah. I think everyone's here that's here. Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mannan.
Here.
Counselor Matusky. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Apolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Ten members present, Mr. President. Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Eleven members present, Mr. President. Would the audience please stand and join us in pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating and just as for all.
Mr. President. Use the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President. We lost, we know everyone had, the wake was going on today, Joe Nygro just passed away. And also, we just heard, we got the unfortunate news that former City Hall employee and mother of Ralph Sacramone, Shirley Moffitt, just passed away sometime today. So if we could have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you. Okay, clerk will read the first item on the agenda. Item number one, Mr. President, it's accordance with the provisions of Article Six, Section Five. The Everett City child, the Everett City Council hereby holds a public hearing for all persons interested in providing testimony on the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2017 capital improvement program. If I may to you, to the clerk, all publicly advertised and so. Yes. Okay. The way public hearings work is that I will ask for those that are interested and those are in opposition or would just like to speak on it, I will ask three times for those in favor and three times for those that are opposed.
Mr. President, will we open it up to, motion to open it up?
I will. I'll just give in general.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, so anyway, that's the way it will work. So, I have a motion to open it up, a second please. Motion made in second, open up the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, the public hearing is open for the capital improvement plan of FY17. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this order? Okay, that was the first time. Is there anyone in favor of speaking on this order for the capital improvement plan? Is there anyone in favor of speaking on this order for the capital improvement plan? Hearing none, that part of the public hearing is closed. Is there anyone speaking in opposition to this plan? Is there anyone speaking in opposition to it? Is anyone speaking in opposition to it? Hearing none, that'll close that part of the public meeting. The public, the matter's before you.
And we're gonna adjourn at six forty-five.
Mike, use your mic.
That's me at six forty-five.
Mike, use your. No, yes. This will be referred to June thirteenth.
I was gonna say, the council meeting is June thirteenth.
Fable action?
Yes.
Refer to the next meeting?
Correct.
At six forty-five.
So moved.
No.
No, no, next meeting, June thirteenth.
No, June thirteenth.
Next mighty meeting, okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Second motion.
And they do need a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Not all in favor?
That's fine.
Will they answer the roll?
No, no, that's fine.
No?
Nope.
All in favor, second five, are saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, you have referred to the next meeting of the city council, which is? The thirteenth. The thirteenth.
Motion to adjourn until six forty-five?
What's that?
Second. Motion to adjourn until six forty-five for the water sewer enterprise fund. You have to wait till six forty-five because it's.
We have another public hearing, don't we?
Yeah, it's six forty-five.
Six forty-five. Well, they both went tonight? Yep. Oh, motion made in second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have adjourned. See you back at six forty-five. Why don't we have them both the same thing?
Uh.
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 Yep. Maybe we'll come to water. Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola. Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mannan.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin. Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Apolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Nine members present, Mr. President. Nine members present, Major General Ruddy, we will forego the pleasantries by the visitors. Clerk will read the next item on the agenda, the only item on the agenda. Item number one, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter Seven, Section One Ninety-Five B of the revised ordinance as the City of Everett, the Everett City Council holds a public hearing for all persons interested in providing testimony on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2017 water sewer enterprise fund. And the same rules will apply about my asking for those opposed to those who are against. So I will accept a motion from the council to open up the public hearing.
So will the president.
Motion made in second, open the public hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, the meeting is open. Is there anyone in the audience that is in favor of the water sewer enterprise fund? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of the water sewer enterprise fund? And for the third time, is there anyone in the audience in favor of the water sewer enterprise fund? Hearing none, we'll close that part of the meeting. Is there any, anyone in the audience that's opposed to the water sewer enterprise fund? Is there anyone in the audience that's opposed to the water sewer enterprise fund? And for the third time, is there anyone in the audience opposed to the water sewer prize, water sewer enterprise fund? Hearing none, that close that part of the meeting, the subject matters before you.
Make a motion to refer it to the June thirteenth council meeting?
Second.
Motion made in second, refer it to the third, June thirteenth council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion made in second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have adjourned. We're going up to that wake. No. I wait. Thank you.
Alright.
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 Yeah.
Problem is, I don't, I don't wear suits to work, so. I know, so. It's nice. Hmm, how you feel? Good? Yeah. Good? Can you wave back at him? Yeah. Good, you. Yeah? Regular, you can jiggle him pretty much? Good. Yeah. Good. Yeah. You're the president? Oh, so this is my apartment. And then, is there a company on that floor? Is that every other month? How do you get screwed on? Oh, a lot of work. Every night after work. You can make it till 11:00 p.m. every night. Right up there. What's that?
Alright, this is the FY17 budget proceedings. This is June 6, 2016, we're at 7:00 p.m. I have Counselor Capone.
Yeah.
And Counselor Delasola.
Here.
And Counselor DeFlorio. I have Counselor DeFlorio. I have Counselor DePiero.
Here.
I have Counselor Heenan. Yes, I did. And I have Counselor Mangan.
Here.
And Counselor Matuski. I have Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
I have Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
I have Counselor Politano.
Here.
And I have Counselor Simonelli.
Yeah.
Eleven members present, we do have a quorum.
The members present, we do have a quorum, please stand and salute the floor. Well, what the other people are in the audience. Okay, we already did it in an earlier meeting, so. Before we get started, Counselor DeFlorio, you have the floor, please.
Could I please invite the city auditor?
Yes, Mr. Demus, if you could, please join us.
Mr. Demus. In regards to the budget that we have in front of us, including the capital improvement and the water enterprise, everything, total. More or less, how much do we have to raise on the budget? I know we don't have to raise the whole amount. And what would that do to the tax, to the tax bill? I know everything is estimated, so we understand that it's an estimate, not a true number.
Based on the budget that you current, I'm sorry, Eric Demus, CFO. Based on the budget that you have in front of you, the tax levy is estimated to be ninety-eight million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Working with the assessor's office, again, the numbers are very preliminary.
Yes.
The state hasn't set their budget. What we've determined is that we're seeing approximately a three percent increase in single-family homes for assessed value. We're seeing multifamily units go up six percent and higher. But based on a single-family home, we went through and did an analysis on a number of houses to get real numbers based on real houses here in the city. And it averaged anywhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty dollars per year.
Okay, so in order to make a difference on that tax rate of, say we wanted to keep a level, we don't want to raise the taxes at all. We'd have to make a substantial cut. It's not going to work on a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, we're talking millions, is that correct?
It would be in the millions, if that's right.
Okay, so if we really want to make a difference, basically, you just have to give it to the whole capital improvement plan, and I'm not willing to do that tonight. It's taken thirty years for this city to grow, and I want it to continue to grow. So I want people to understand in the City of Everett that, yes, your taxes are going to go, based on this budget, your taxes will go up a little bit. Whatever it is, we don't have a real figure, but more or less, we have an idea. But based on what's going on in the city, the growth we have in the city, the programs we have in the city, we can't cut it now, we just can't. We're moving forward, and I personally, that's my opinion, I want to move forward. So I personally don't make a plan on making any cuts to this budget unless, like I said, we turn around and we just got the whole capital improvement plan, that's way too much to go forward, so thank you for your answer.
Thank you, Counselor DeFlorio, Counselor Hanlon, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the budget as presented.
Second the motion.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor in second and to accept the budget as submitted to us, Mr. Clerk, a roll call, vote.
Yes. To accept your whole budget. Uh, Counselor Capone.
No.
Uh, Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
I have Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
I have Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
I have Counselor Heenan.
Yes.
I have Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
I have Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
I have Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
I have Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
I have Counselor Politano.
Yes.
I have Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Do you have ten years, one day? The budget is passed.
Ten years, one days, the budget is passed as submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to refer this to the next meeting of the city council.
Make a motion, second.
Second motion.
Second motion to refer to next meeting of the city council, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.